All right, it's Wednesday, May 29, 2013. South End Common Council is now in session. The invitation by Vice President Oliver Davis.
That is right, we love you. Thank you so much for being here tonight. We ask you to provide us with them as you make decisions for the City of South Bend. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Third floor, you head the roll, please. Mr. Scott? Mr. Henry Davis? Where is, uh, Mrs. Shea?
Also ready to serve.
Dr. Lund? Dr. Lund? Vice President Davis?
I'm here.
Council member White?
President.
Mr. Fordy?
I'm here.
President Dieter?
President, Mr. Fordy.
Nonline present?
Thank you. May I have the report from the Subcommittee on Minutes?
To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has entered the minutes of the May 13, 2013 meeting of the Council and farm members to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved, signed by Derek Dieter, David Varner. So move. Okay, we're all in favor, and we have a second?
Aye.
Aye. The opposition has seen none. Under Special Business, I would like to report that representing the city administration tonight, sitting in that seat in the second row, is Chief of Staff Mike Schmoll. Thank you for attendance tonight. Also, Karen White would like to make an announcement regarding the busts under her leadership.
I would like to share with all of you that tomorrow, we will be touring District 3, 4, and 5, and that will begin at 3 o'clock. This is opportunity for the council members, as well as representatives from their districts, who will be on the bus with us to see the city at large, and will help us as we start the budget process as well. So I'd like to thank each council member for their participation. Last week, we toured the 1st, 2nd, and 6th Districts, and it was a very, very nice experience, and we look forward to even a greater experience on tomorrow.
Thank you, ma'am. Please. Report from city offices, seeing none, may I have a motion to resolve on the committee? Second. On favor? Aye. The opposition?
I've asked the president to remain in this seat as many of the bills that are before will be continued. At this time, the Committee of the Hall is now in session. The reports of the Household meetings were bills against a second reading in the public hearing. Mrs. Fordy, you please give a second reading to Bill 19-13.
I'm appearing on a grill to vacate the following described property. The first, east-west alley, south of Indiana Avenue, from St. Joseph's Street, east approximately 200 feet to the north-south alley, and a width of 14 feet.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, ma'am, Chair. Under works of property vacant committee, met this afternoon, and we bring Bill 19-13 to the full council with favorable report.
Thank you. And thank you so much. At this time, we'll ask for the presenter to come to the podium. We ask that you state your name and give us a brief summary of Bill 19-13.
How are you doing? My name is Ricardo Taylor, Sr. I'm the senior pastor of Mount Carmel Baptist Church. I've been pastor for 15 years, and we're asking to vacate the alley to allow us to continue to develop our new facility that we're doing right now. Presently, we're completing a facility that, we're completing a two million dollar facility right now, that we're actually moving in July of first, and what we wanted to do is, in 2015, add another addition to that, so that'll be phased too. We've been buying property in that neighborhood for the last 15 years, tearing down abandoned homes, destroying the neighborhood, and so we would like for you to consider us, we would like for you to consider vacating that alley, so we can continue to grow our church.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions? Are the petitioner, Councilman Davis?
Just for a matter of, just, uh, business, when it comes back out to some promise, I would like to, um, okay.
Thank you. You think the petitioner, and at this time, we're going to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in support of Bill 19-13? We ask that you state your name and your address. At first District Councilmember will, Phil Scott, with five minutes, sorry.
Reverend Greg Brown, 1238 Diamond. I speak highly for this, uh, the redevelopment of Mount Carmel, and what they're doing, and how they've brought the jobs back. I think it'd be a good decision. I don't know if you've been through the neighborhood, they done bought a lot of houses over there, and cleaned the area up. I have my guide spot out there, we walked several blocks over there, and I think it'll do the community well, because you got an alley that's sitting there, that there's a lot of debris that at once was being dumped in, and it will take a burden, I think, off the city as far as cleaning it. Neighborhood enforcement will probably appreciate that, and I think that it should be recommended and considered. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm here with Scotty Peel, Box 3594, South Bend, Indiana, 46619. I would like to support the application of the allies for Pastor Ricardo Taylor. He's been a role model in the community for a number of years, and he also go back a long way, and he has cleaned up the area over there, and they worked really hard and devoted to make that area recognizable to the community. Thank you much.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else present wishing to speak in support of Bill 19-13? Seeing no one, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? We tell you to, we ask that you come to the podium and state and share your name and address.
My name is Jerry Ivicek. I have an office at 3019 South Michigan Street, South Bend. Owned in property at 208, the vacant lot, at 206 East Indiana. I applaud the efforts of the church that they've got going, it's fantastic. I have a question about procedure, and how it's going to impact the property, in that I have sold it on land contract terms to an individual who didn't see it the way it's evolving right now, and I don't think he's happy about it. The church at one time called me about possibly purchasing my property with consent of the land contract buyer. I think that's still a good consideration. I would like to present to the council some photos I took of the property and what's happening. Jerry? The first photo, taken and shot towards the east, shot from the west side of St. Joe Street, north of the occupied alley, and here's my situation. It looks to me as though the alley, to some extent, has already been taken open. There's a part of it to the east that has not been used for machinery, and into the photos, you will see, I think it's photo two, a joyous John, sitting in the middle of the alley. The second photo, shot straight east, standing in the alley in the 100 block of East Indiana and East DuBail, the alley separating those two streets, and I believe that straight through shot would reflect the proposed area for the alley. The third photo, taken from, again, that same side, St. Joe Street, is a northeast angle shot toward the house at 208 East Indiana. The fourth photo is shot towards the south side of the church, from the middle of the street separation. The fifth photo is shot towards the northwest, toward the house showing the east side of 208 East Indiana. Photo number six is shot west, towards the proposed alley, while I'm standing in the alley that comes from the east and runs up to the northwest, or north-south intersection of that alley. Photo seven is shot towards the south, down the north-south alley, towards the houses on East DuBail. Photo number eight reflects a north shot towards East Indiana, again, standing at the alley intersection. There are some unaccounted-for spaces within the alley and the backside of my property.
Sir, you have one minute.
I sold the property at 208, and the vacant lot at 206, with an alley back there, and I did not know this was going on, so, hey, I wish there would be an effort to perhaps more aggressively go after the property that we have, that we would consider selling. Right now, in a way compromises the way my land contract buyer can use the back of the property. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else present wishing to speak in opposition of this bill? We tell you to, we ask that you come to the podium and state your name and, and your address as well.
My name is Nick Roman de Hixhous. I am here for Carmen and Claudio Escobar, from 225 DuBail Street, Rhynex Property, to the east of the new facilities. And Mr. Escobar wants, I'm, in a way, I'm the translator, his English is not that great, so he wanted me to speak on his behalf. Mr. Escobar moved there, how long ago? Five years, about five years, and there was a lot of traffic and everything, and he recognizes that bringing a church there would be very beneficial to, to the community, absolutely, and how big and how, you know, well attended the churches during the weekends, so they do need more space. At this point, the point of reference is the alley, he received a letter saying that they were gonna, they want to vacate the area, and already, the alley, it's been closed. There is already a part of the sidewalk in there, there's, there's no traffic through, there's, it's impossible to go through already, so there was taking some action before any decision was taken, and not consulting the owners. Because of this, he already had a vehicle getting into his fence, and there has been some damage to his property because of this, because at the turning point, it's an awkward angle, and, and he's, he's complaining because of this, he's had no idea that the construction of the sidewalk was gonna be there until about three weeks, four weeks ago, and he wants to know what can they do. He says also, if his side, which is the western side of his house, is gonna have the alley, this problem is gonna continue happening, so he's saying, if there's a possibility for, for him to have the whole area of his alley to be also be closed, so no cars can come around. He has six children, and he's concerned about, you know, traffic in that area, and that's how that can impact his family. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have, we have some photographs, if anyone could give them?
The first photograph will be the one for the sidewalks, and the other ones, the other two are the fence and the damages on the fence. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, if there's no one else wishing to speak in opposition, the petitioner, you have five minutes to rebuttal, and then we'll, the public hearing will be closed, and we'll move back to the powerful portion.
Okay. On behalf of purchasing the young man's house, that's our goal, purchase that home, but we need to complete our project first, so we will go back to your table and talk with him about purchasing that particular home. We, we know we have to do that in order to continue to grow. The young man right, right here, that has probably with the rental. As far as the house that the couple just talked about here, they have a fence that they just installed themselves, and that's real, they probably haven't had a survey, it's too close to the alley, and then as a church, we have nothing to do with who travels down and hit that fence at night, so that's not our responsibility. As far as the construction, having the alley closed already, the city have, the city allowed us, we actually met with the building commissioner, and because of the crime in that area, we had to fence off the facility during the construction, and they allowed us to close that alley off temporarily, until we came to this point right here, and so that's why there was a fence around the alley, that's why we set all our construction trailers around the alley, and, and we lit it up over there. As far as, as far as, we own all the land that's adjacent to that alley at this particular time, and so that's why the alley was closed, and we do wanna have talks with the young man who purchased his home in the future, we just cannot do it right now till we complete our project now, and that's, that's it.
Thank you so much. At this time, Councilmember Derek Dieter?
Another question on the, were the, was it the city that poured the curbing, that cut the alley off?
No, um, no, no, the city, the city did not do that, no. We actually, we actually poured that back, we actually poured that back.
Who, who from the city said? Go ahead.
Uh, nobody could, and the city said, go ahead. We, we actually got a letter saying that we're gonna come and talk, we got invited, and so we actually walked on faith on that.
Okay, so that, that was done, okay. I'm just trying to get it, 'cause that, that is, that curbing does block it, I was just trying to find out.
Right, no, no, no.
The horse and place nurse on that.
No, we actually jumped ahead of the gun.
Okay, and then, this, this alley stops where your property is in mid-alley, from sort of, from like the middle of the block, going back east, Columbia, it'll still be open?
Right.
Do you ever, like, the gentleman asked, do you ever plant on, that's, 'cause I haven't worked southeast in a long time, how many houses are between your church and Columbia?
Uh, maybe four, and four homes, and yes, we actually, yeah, we planted on buying all, because we bought most of the vacant lots.
'Cause that, in the end, that would, 'cause I think I had a couple of them last time I worked in, I vacant.
Right, there's, there's three of them that's, there's three people living there, and one's, one's a common fire, it's been burning up.
Are there any other questions? Councilmembers, you want to ask a question, petitioner?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Um, how about we go back and go to common?
Well, when I closed off the public hearing, we'll go back to common.
Okay, well, the question I do have, 'cause I was just telling about this, you haven't been before us at all, and I understand that was a residential area, was there any change for you to build the property?
Uh, we did come before you, uh-
You did?
Yeah, and that, and it actually was approved for us to actually do that facility.
Okay. I, I don't recollect that, and that's why I was-
I actually came back here with our developer, and at that time, it was during the daytime, and so they actually approved all, they approved to allow us to consolidate the lots, to make it one lot, and then they approved us to do the construction before we started.
So, look, not very planned, because, okay, well, I mean, it's fine, I was just asking to, and this other question as well, so then, if that was already approved, then is there any access, or the access of the alley, does it lead to someone's garage, is there any people using the garages in the back?
There's no garages on there.
There are no? Okay.
And, and we own all the land, all the land that's adjacent to that alley, Mount Carmel purchased.
Okay.
Do you have a question, if the council members, you have a petitioner? If not, thank you for your comments, and I just thought of folks in the public hearing. At this, at this time, council members, what is your pleasure? I do know that Councilman Davis indicated that he would like to make some comments, so I'm gonna start with Councilmember Scott, all the way down.
Michael Sherman is the cart in front of the horse, that's all I have to say.
Councilman Davis?
Uh, no, you know, I think it's a great idea, as a matter of fact, I've used a reference to that area in a couple of my, uh, pleas for passing some deals here, here recently, actually, and I think that it is a great idea to begin the process of development in an area that has been discredited, or has been depreciated over the years. One thing that I'm gonna probably encourage you, I'm encouraging you to do, because of the momentum that has started as a result of this project, there were obviously plans at one point in time to help develop that area, due to the fact that Wally High School was being built, and the extension that was being built at, and obviously, it was literally right down the street, and I would implore you to potentially find out what those plans were for that neighborhood. If there weren't enough plans for that neighborhood, what I would also say is that you probably should work with your council representatives, and also folks from the administration, meaning Scott Ford, to begin a process of a community development plan. And what I mean by that is, what does it look like in five, 12 years from now, to have support the growth of a church being there, or support the growth of folks buying new property and building new homes in that area? What happens is that you don't want to be in a position where you've spent in the access of $2 million, and your retirement or investment turns into something sour, meaning that there's nothing to support around it, meaning small stores, meaning any service that could be potentially to the community at large in that area. So, as we're dealing with this vacant abandoned housing issue, that also comes into play as well, when we're talking about community development. So, as a scope of five to 12 years from now, in five to 13 years from now, what does this area look like, and how does the city itself support the development right now, but also into the future? Will we pack any land, will we bring in hog builders, will we bring in, you know, stores that may be able to service the area? So I, I support that whole heartily, truly, but I think that there is a larger conversation in this, because of the amount of money that's being spent right now.
Thank you. Now, Ms. Shea, we've passed the paper, and I thank you for what you're doing for our community and for our residents, and I'm looking for support of Bill 19-13. Councilmember Ford?
Welcome.
Councilman Dieter?
Thank you, Councilmember White. I'd like to thank the pastor and everybody in Mount Carmel, back in the late 70s and 80s, and even early 90s, when we worked, actually, Mike King, when we worked down there with a lot of people, on the midnight shift, and it was, some people, compared to Lincoln Way and Western everything, now for them, it is even across that area, it was the worst in South Bend, the most dangerous. There was, actually, where your site is, there was a motorcycle gang that was digging a bunker to keep drugs, and ammunition and weapons, there was an old man that lived right across the street, the golf ball man who collected golf balls at Steve Baker, and he would put them out, and he was murdered down there, so I applaud your efforts to bring that area back, because there's the historical Steve Baker House on Indiana, when they, were there years ago, but from where it was to where it is now, again, that's, that's great that you guys are doing that, investing the time and money to bring that area, and actually, so where it should be, because it was, it was ground zero back in the day. So actually, Mike King and I also were trapped in the house by, by the gang members, and we had to go and rescue, as it would be back in the day, so again, in full support of this, just hopefully, next time, we'll get more on the paperwork done before the curbing and the cement come in, but hopefully, Mr. Ivicek, and you can work on that person, and help the other people over on DuBail there, and that would be great, so I'm in full support.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford.
I have no questions.
I'm just glad to follow Pastor Taylor and the Mount Carmel Church. You shared the day you've grown from about 30 plus members to now about 1,200 members, and that shows the growth, and I'm really pleased with that. I'm also pleased with the fact that you're community-minded, not just focusing on inside of the walls of the church, but right around the neighborhood, and to build, build neighborhoods. Again, you've heard your concerns of your neighbors that are there, and I look forward to your response. I'm glad that you said you were gonna be willing to work with the young man back there, and your neighbors here, you can work with them, because I think that's the whole goal, is to bring peace in, in our neighborhoods, and that's what you've been doing already, and so, and I'm glad they came to share their concerns, and they know where you are, all of you are, have seen each other, and have worked with each other, and I'm looking forward to a peaceful resolution on that in the future, and I'm glad to see you before.
Congratulations on your contribution.
Pastor Shea, I would like to personally thank you, that you had a choice to move out of the community, you saw this larger vision, so I really thank you for remaining within the community, for your vision in buying property, again, your membership is a very large one, you've been able to sustain that over a period of time, that will have a direct impact on that particular community, so really, just very grateful for your commitment to the district that reached the church to be expanded, and also the vision that's more beyond the church walls. Really very thankful for, and look forward to July 1, 2013, when it's reopened. At this time-
I move a simple recommendation.
Second, has it moved a second, and all those in favor of the motion, I hear you vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Bill 19-13, we take the full conference with a favorable recommendation. We now like to entertain a motion regarding Bill 9-13.
I'd like to make a motion to continue 9-13 to 6-10-13.
Second, has it moved a second, and all those in favor of the motion, I hear you vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
I'd like the motion to continue 18-13 to 6-10-13.
Second, has it moved a second, and all those in favor of the motion, I hear you vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. We now like to entertain a motion regarding Bill 22-13.
I'd like to make a motion to continue 22-13 to 6-24-13. Second.
Has it moved a second, and all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. I believe we have to accept-
Uh, we can do it in one motion, to accept the substitute, the new substitute bill on file with the city clerk for Bill Number 23-13, and set it for public hearing on June 24.
So move.
Second. Has it moved a second, and all those in favor of the motion, I hear you vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
And the motion for Bill 24-13 to accept the substitute bill on file with the office of the city clerk, and set that for public hearing on June 24.
So move. Second.
Has it moved a second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. We now stop to entertain a motion to, right, to continue the hold.
So move. Second.
Has it moved a second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
The council's now in session. Third floor, let's go with the third reading of 19-13. Third reading on a blend, with the following described property. The first, east-west alley, south of Indiana Avenue, from St. Joseph's Street, east approximately 200 feet to the north-south alley, and a width of 14 feet.
Move for half this, of Bill 19-13.
Second, the motion is second, third floor. Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
Dr. Ferlick?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Ferlick?
Aye.
President Dieter? Nine aye. Thank you very much. Proceed to Resolution 13-36. A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, appointing an agent/negotiator to represent the Common Council, and addressing the city advisory negotiating team for the 2013 Teamsters Labor Negotiation. Thank you very much. I believe Dr. David Vano was the chairperson of the, that's a personal finance, and I think you guys discussed the present problems, was essentially what we did, was look at the members who would be part of the negotiating team, Councilmember Shea, myself, Mr. Davis, and Gavin Ferlick will all participate in this, with regards to Teamsters, I believe Cheryl Green, the administration, will have the administration side of it, so that was the gist of this resolution. All right, thank you. And as the presenter, it also includes that we appoint our council attorney, Kathy Sikansky Barrett, as the lead negotiator for the city of Teamsters. Thank you for correcting the record. Thank you very much. Anyone like to speak in favor of the, for the opposition? Seeing none in council, may I recommend?
Move for the adoption of Resolution 13-36.
Second. Third floor. Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
Dr. Ferlick?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Ferlick?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
President Dieter? Nine aye. Thank you very much. Proceed to first reading of 25-13, please. First reading on a blend of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending the maximum salary and wages of certain non-bargaining employees of the City of South Bend, Indiana, for calendar year 2013. Make a motion that we send Bill 25-13, the first-
Make a motion that we send Bill twenty-five thirteen to first going finance uh for six twenty-four for second republicary. Good job. Second. Volunteer for that.
Aye.
In the opposition, thank you. Unfinished business may have a motion to send good eleven thirteen, twenty thirteen, and twenty-one thirteen to sign an annexation for six twenty-four thirteen. The blue.
Second.
Volunteer. Aye. In the opposition. Any other unfinished business before the council do start? Dr. Verner.
Uh, make note of the fact that uh the two items, twenty-three thirteen and twenty-four thirteen, uh while they were continued to six twenty-four, will have uh committee meetings. And I'd like to uh, or to make note of that and see if we have time scheduled for brief hearings on those uh up to six ten scheduled meeting. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. President. Um, at the mayor's night out, there were some um members who came from the Toppin Moore area and um also um also the other apartments, so Miami Hills, who's talked with us and so we'll be having a meeting this coming Monday.
Six thirty.
And that's gonna be um-
Virginia Tupperance.
Virginia Tupperance Library.
Unless it's unavailable.
Unless it's unavailable, then we'll be back here. Um, a couple of other things, um, you all saw emails today that said, uh, council on the ballot, Shay.
Member.
Um, fine, um, so I would defer that to later on.
But I think so.
Uh, I do admire the way you're doing business.
Okay, new business. So, any other unfinished business? Okay, new business, ballot, and another.
Thank you, President D. Uh, I would like to note that I, the council, that I have had a number of challenges in securing information from the administration needed for my oversight role on the council, on the redevelopment commission and as a board member of the country center, board of managers. Uh, for that reason, I have contacted the Indiana Public Access Counselor and filed the necessary forms to secure their assistance with this matter. I will keep the council apprised with this uh issue.
Thank you. All right, thank you, ma'am. Wow. Councilmember Henry Davis Jr.
Redevelopment commission, it's not, isn't it?
Uh, really quick, uh, I got some serious questions I'm gonna ask, um, and I'm not being disparaging in this, I just need to know off the purposes of future, um, the Appleton area obviously has been a topic of discussion for a matter of months. And I've- I've come to understand that there are some measures that are being taken, study are being taken to secure uh funding from residents to pay for pumps, but also even that um in itself is not uh, well, I think is a worthy cause, but even more so the actions of trying to create a neighborhood association or a neighborhood owners association, some sort of type of group. And why I'm bringing these two things up, I don't want that to be a boilerplate, a boilerplate for issues that haven't been in any other neighborhood. And what I'm getting at is that, um, there are things as the city council has also the mayor's administration, et cetera, that can be done without those things being created, which sort of creates some sort of thing called meeting fatigue, and I've talked about that before. Um, neighborhoods are fine, uh, in essence of what they already are. People are looking at areas what they already feel comfortable safe in. And so, uh, diverting the conversation to saying that the uh neighborhoods need to do X, Y, and Z to get this done, I think causes such a bad presence for later on when it may happen in another part of the city. And I'm not saying that, you know, the buyer's always gonna rise somewhere else in- in the city, but what I am saying is that following along that instructional path that has been set will create uh a- a potentially a disaster in another area. The city is charged with taking care and making sure the residents are safe wherever they're at. And so, are we doing what we are supposed to be doing first before asking, or requiring the residents to do all of these things before we dive in and begin the process of fixing and cleaning up or being proactive about making sure this thing doesn't happen again? So, I'm just clearing that out there because I- I feel a certain way because I don't want that to happen over in the second district, I don't want that to happen in there for someone. I wanna make sure that we as a city are doing what we are supposed to be doing first before we require residents to do something above and beyond to call a duty when we're not doing what we're supposed to do to begin with. And I'm not you, Oliver, I'm talking about where I think where the changes are taken with the administration.
Can I respond to that? Can I read till you start, or?
Um, the other deal, a- a- and I'm not trying to cause, I'm just don't want that to be a cause of action as at least the second, the first, and the other districts that are in the city, because that would be a boilerplate, a boilerplate for anyone to follow behind. The other deal is that I've gotten several phone calls and- and meetings with certain um residents in the district, and I really would like to understand this. The police, South Bend Police Department, um, is charged with obviously making sure this uh city is- is being kept safe and folks are feeling safe in the area and serving protect. Um, there are a number of residents in the Russell Park Homes that don't feel that they are safe from the police. Um, there are a number of residents that have a dirt train out of that were arrested, I guess for some border enters, some traffic took place, but there was a mass arrest that took place over in that area as well. The last time the hours was the hours open over here and the city ended up paying out in fees because of folks were suing the city for unlawful arrests. So, um, I've heard uh there was a interview a couple of years ago on the news where uh Chief Chairman and also Mayor Booty George, and the whole progression of this conversation as it relates to buyers and youth buyers has been, we wanna be able to point out the folks who are going to possibly shoot the gun. I don't know who that person is and what they even look like. I don't know if they walk along with a t-shirt that says, "I'm gonna shoot someone." But what I do recognize is that there is a thing called profiling that- that- that sits out there that- that's very dangerous and you shouldn't wanna test that. So, my question to the council and how we go along this line is we need to know what is going on and how these communities are being policed to make sure that they're safer and not living in fear of, because that's what's going on. People are living in fear of the police rather than feeling safer because the police presence is there.
Okay. Councilmember Davis. Thank you, President D. First of all, I'd like to share, um, and I wanna be very clear with this whole matter with um the uh new energy, because I've heard it shared several times by Councilman Davis. I've heard Councilman Davis has talked several other people out there who've called me.
No, they called me.
And I'm gonna be honest. Um, Councilman Tim Scott and I were the first councilmen out there. Then, um, like to thank Councilman Gavin Ford, Councilwoman Karen White, and Councilman um Dave Verner. And attorney, you came. Also, John Borger came out there too. And our three meetings that we had, um, finally, President D, you also were there too. I'm excited you're there. Um, Valerie Shay, can I make it? And um, those, I think I've covered everybody who came back to the meeting. Um, and so, we were there. Um, Chief Staff, Mike Smol, you were there along with Eric Probar. Gary Tillot was also there. And uh, one of the bills from that one, um, I don't know if yous, they came up there. Mike Meacham came to the person and I believe uh Carl, well, maybe it come to the person. That was all the city officials that were there. The reason I share that with you is because while we were there at the meetings, it was very clear with all of the neighbors that we were gonna look at partnership with the city, with council, and with neighbors. We talked about the whole idea of the wealth just came from the neighbors and we said we may have to cost a baby ten, fifteen dollars to add on. Neighbors were paying twenty, thirty plus forty, fifty dollars more in terms of whatever their electricity bills were, their electricity deals were going up. They were paying two hundred and fifty dollars more for some pumps. They were playing two or three or four some pumps that were breaking down, wires were going all over the place. And really, when we talked about fifteen dollars, maybe twelve or twenty dollars, it was, just the Councilman Davis shared several times out there, why are we doing that? If, when you put it in perspective for what was going on out there during the Christmas season, I personally, as the media of seventy of you all were out there, walked through these houses and you saw gifts, homes, and pockets, everything else being torn apart for the fact that, um, there is a strong argument, which I will publicly say, that um some of those in municipal government said that if people sued, the chances of them being able to get anything out here for the next five, ten years could be a problem being done by municipal government. Some of the administration, um, in many ways, I understood the cautiousness, but I'm very thankful that they came up with three hundred and fifty, that's gonna be how much, that's a whole quarter over to fix that whole well, it's three hundred something thousand dollars that they're putting out there. Plus, we've had to do all the studies, plus we've had to do all the surveys, plus we've had to do all that stuff. That's over five hundred thousand dollars probably that they tried to put out. And that's being done before anybody pays one penny more on their electric bill. So, if not that's meant, anybody from the sixth district, anybody from the place is having to put up money for it for the city act. The city acted. Councilmembers acted. The administration acted. Um, made, literally, the whole team acted. We all had our disagreements and we all shared all this, but we came to a peaceful understanding of where we are with that. And that's why I shared that with you, because with all due respect, Councilman Davis, it has been shared several times that there's no leadership out there, we have none of the stuff that you said at the different meetings. Uh, let's- let's- let's move forward from that. Um, and because that generates people saying that, you know, we're not doing anything else. That's not what we're doing. The administration clearly stated at our meetings that they were gonna bring um, uh, council, I mean, the attorney Fox to work with the people there. We knew that. All of us attended the meetings, we knew that, familiar day. And she's volunteered her time. Another, I thought personally, um, Chief Staff, I almost thought that was a joke when I did that. You know, you didn't, I was the nifty, you know? And when I met with um Attorney Fox, the lady is doing a- a- a yawn, a woman's a yawn man's. I have the famous type, don't say yawn man, you know, anymore. Uh, so, she's doing a great job. And we have a very interesting league issue because when you talk about homeowners associations, typically you talk about them first and then you build houses. We are doing the opposite thing where we already have the houses out there and we're trying to flip around the property. That's a little bit different. And so, therefore, we have to respond to that issue and I understand quite legally that's a little bit different because if you have twenty people pay and four people don't, it's hard to force people to pay on something that you get. And so, we gotta look at all that. So, I understand the zero, and after our last council meeting, I went and we talked and she made a lot of sense. I think she's been meeting with the people. I'm scared to go to that being double, first, and that's two different meetings at the same time, but I'm scared that the neighbors have been meeting. And that's why I don't want anybody from this council or from the administration to give any misinformation out there about this tough situation. And I've worked very hard out there and all the council people have been out there and I think we've been, um, derelict in duty of people from the council that have shared any kind of misinformation to the people when we've been out there working to turn from another back, even when I truly went there. So, that's what I wanted to share with that, um, Mr. President, because I- I'm just tired of hearing that we haven't done that plan. I, we can trust the administration on several things, but that's one thing we can't trust about them because um they went ahead even against some of their own council issues because some of those, I think, could have been done and we could have waited until legal matters take place. But I'm thankful that we moved, and to get something done by October and this speed of time is- is- is a great time. And I think we have to give credit where credit is due and not always be on the battlefield of battlefield knocking fourteen versus four in Florida. So, I'm moving forward now to some other things. Um, we have votes, sir, that um we, that I think you got. I sent a letter from um Valerie Shay and you all, I did T C on that today. We're gonna, I want everybody to keep up to date. Well, there's a meeting next week, I know from the Democrat side of that, um, some of them are gonna be in town, but we will be there to, Republicans have been meeting on that. And I must say, the obvious was larger than the others was smaller, but now we're coming to more of a middle, around both sides of looking at that, which has been great. So, please keep up to date with all the emails, read them. Any questions that you have regarding voters, if you look at the email that I sent to Valerie Shay today, they gave off three members of the election board and you can send, I gave their emails, so please look at that one. Um, if you pass by Walmart, now that's in your fifth district, even though the store started, you sh- you will see a bus shelter at Walmart from transport. We put up a bus shelter, been working at the T. That's a temporary shelter, but at least that's the first one we put up there. And so, now the people at Walmart will not have to sit in the rain and snow. We have a bus shelter at Walmart, so when you go past Walmart, that was put up just two weeks ago and I'm very happy with that. Um, also, I'm gonna thank Councilwoman Karen White for attending the Run Village meeting I have on, um, maybe two, um, two thousand and thirteenth meeting. And um, the Polk Hagens, um, are moving, are many more, are, we talked about that in the afternoon in the sixth district, they're opening up their, um, their administrative offices next week, we'll invite you out there. And the last thing, we met with um the mayor and Chief Staff about the lake. And now hopefully in our next few weeks, uh, we will hear our update regarding um the lake, um, pardon? Best lake, to get a- a clearer understanding of that, even though that affects all of us public works with the hook, um, with utilities and all the waters that go along with that. I'm sure, but like you didn't state it publicly, you already worked and live on with Councilman Henry Davis on that matter, so I thank you.
Who's working me? Oh, no.
That's what they said.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, Oliver, I'd just like to inform everyone, the council included, and the people who stood here, next Thursday, June six, which is D-Day, Dr. Furlic. The uh, the South Bend Silver House will be presenting a documentary called On a Flight. You can see it on YouTube or Google. Basically, it's a documentary of World War II veterans where funding was raised by people across the country that any World War II veteran who was able to is flown to Washington, DC to see the World War II monument. The code will be presenting this starting at seven PM. Uh, will be some military aircraft and uh static displays will take another military vehicle. So, if you know veterans, veterans are given free mission for the families, everyone else has five dollars and they want to raise money for the eight hundred people, eight hundred veterans, World War II veterans who die daily in this country, to give as many to Washington, DC to see the memorial. They so greatly deserve and defend our country in what they call is the greatest generation, Dr. Furlic. So, thank you very much. If anyone wants to talk to us at this time or something that Oliver didn't speak about tonight, you may do so, if there's something specific that you want us to follow up. You need to write it down. If you don't write it down, then it will just be a rub. So, if there's something you want us to follow up, write it down, I will give it to the committee chair. You will have three minutes and Councilmember Tim Scott will time it. I'll give you a thirty-second exit. Reverend Greg Brown, twelve thirty-eight diamond. I'm here concerned about this city. I filled out the papers at the floor and it reads, sometime in April two thousand and thirteen, an altercation broke out behind Martin Luther King Center. Our officer was inside, when I say officers, chief was inside with another officer having a meeting, a one-on-one meeting. A gentleman ran in and said it was a big fight and it's probably a hundred and seventy-five people outside. The chief of police stayed inside, but Mr. Newton went out there and dispersed the fight. Now, he came in with a big plan. He just stood in churches and said that we gonna disperse things. I wanna know why he didn't go out there and assist his fellow officer. Uh, I put in phone calls to him about this moped situation. I have the moped manual, a lot of people didn't even know they had a moped manual. They have an Indiana driver's manual that has all the new stuff about the roundabouts, how to approach them. We got kids falling off bikes, stealing mopeds, and we can't seem to get him to come on board. Do we, as the people in this community that's concerned, have to wait on the chief? The chief came into my community, he- he had to ask me about my community. He can't come in and say it's gonna be this way. I seen him in a parade, I seen him get off the bus the other day at Martin Luther King Center. He walked in and used the men's room and didn't speak to anybody. How can we develop a relationship? And that's the problem, is no communication. Mr. D, you've been on the department, I knew you're in the neighborhood, you the same way every time I see you. I see this young man right here, this officer here, the same way. We have to gather together, together, together. And if we can't gather together to get things done in this community, it's gonna be a sad one. It's not a dying city, it's a lying city.
This is a lying city. When you have a man sitting in that predicament and that can make a change in this community and don't make it, then we have a problem. If any other officer is wearing that blue South End Police Department uniform would not assisted his fellow officer, they would have fired him. They would have fired him. Right on the spot, he would have known where he was going to work at for next week. I can't understand why a chief of police running around with all these bulletproof vests on and all these tools to use and didn't go out to assist his fellow officer. And if he can't assist his officer, how can he assist me and find the safety in this community for the mopeds? Mr. Viner? So it tends to be that, uh, back to where we've come from. If we can't wake him up, you know, shake him up.
Jesse Davis, BL Box 10205, South End, Indiana. Um, the last time I came to the council, I brought a privilege to the floor, to the council, and I asked them to look into a criminal case of double billing by a contractor that our city has been putting into homeowners' houses. Um, I had talked to the prosecutor's office. He told me in order to get this prosecuted and look into it, had to go to the police department and have a police investigation. I proceeded to go to the police department, I filed the proper police report. They gave it a case number. I found out they assigned it to a detective to investigate. This was two weeks ago. I made three phone calls to the detective, received no return phone calls, so I went and approached Chief Teachman yesterday at the mayor's night out. I laid all these double bills that these homeowners had brought in also in front of the chief and I said, "Look, here's the evidence, the crime has been committed. What, what's going on with this? The homeowners want to know, I want to know." He told me he would get back with me Thursday or call him on Friday. This morning, I received a call from the detective who was assigned the case. And the detective tells me that he has transferred the case to the city's legal department and the city's legal department is now in charge of this investigation. Well, I have it from what I understand, the city's legal department does not prosecute criminal actions or, you know, crimes that are committed. They handle civil law. So my question to the council is, can you look into this and find out why the police department dropped the ball and did not want to investigate this crime? The evidence was laid in front of them with a ribbon on it and they do not want to investigate this crime and they turned it over to the city's legal department. This guy needs to be prosecuted. If it was myself or any other contractor in this town, we'd be sitting in jail right now. And we'd be all over the news media. We had some other contractors recently in the news that, uh, were duping people out of money. This guy's been at this for three and a half years and he's been in thousands of homeowners' homes. The reason I was told that it was sent to the city legal department is because the city is a victim in the crime. I filed the report as a third party. And if the city's a victim, since when does the victim-
30 seconds, sir.
-have to investigate the crime against herself?
My name is Samuel Brown. I'm representing citizens in the Nashville Better Government, 415 McHale Street, South End, Indiana. And I think, uh, Brother Bob and Jesse have covered some very valid points. But I would like to also say something about our police department. Uh, this, uh, weekend, we're doing Memorial Day weekend, I had some guests come many miles from Chicago. It's a motorcycle club called the Hawks. They're a very big club. And, uh, apparently I didn't really do what I was supposed to do, but I called experts. I called the president of the council, uh, got some advice from him, since I didn't really bother to correct the seat because it would take another four weeks to get it done.